Okay, good evening, everyone. As the mayor of the city of Kingston, I offer these words in the spirit of this gathering. Let us bring our good minds and hearts together as one to honor and celebrate these traditional lands as a gathering place of the original peoples and their ancestors, who are entrusted to care for Mother Earth since time immemorial. It is with deep humility that we acknowledge and offer our gratitude for their contributions to this community, having respect for all as we share the space now and walk side by side into the future. So with that as an official call to order, Madam Deputy Clerk, do we have a quorum?
Yes, Mayor Patterson, we have quorum. I'd like to confirm at this time, in attendance, we have yourself, Councillor Chappell, Councillor Doherty, Councillor Holland, Councillor Hutchison, Councillor McLaren, Councillor Osterhoff, Councillor Ossanik, Councillor Stroud. Joining us from staff, Paige Agnew, Commissioner of Community Services, Neil Carbone, Commissioner of Corporate Services, Peter Huguenbos, Commissioner of Business, Environment and Projects, Brad Joyce, Commissioner of Transportation and Public Works, Desiree Kennedy, CFO and City Treasurer, John Bolignone, City Clerk, Jennifer Campbell, Director of Heritage Services, Lana Folds, Director of Financial Services, Paul McClatchy, Environment Director, Jenna Morley, Director of Legal Services and City Solicitor, Karen Santucci, Director of Public Works and Solid Waste, Ryan Eboy, Acting Manager, Recreation of Facilities, myself, Janet James, Deputy City Clerk. Our meeting host tonight is Ian Sullivan, Marcus Legacy and Colin Taylor are providing technical support. And tonight, we will be receiving one delegation from Davin Johnson with respect to an Ontario Heritage Act approval at 81 Gore Street. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. So we have nothing under committee of the whole closed meeting. Approval of the addits, we have two sets of addits that all look to approve together. So on the first addits, we have the addition of a clause to Report Number 38 and some communications. And then on our second added, we have a new motion and some communications. Can I have a mover and a seconder for the two addits? Moved by Councillor Ossanik, seconded by Councillor Holland. All those in favor? Opposed? And that's carried. Okay, moving on, are there any disclosures of potential pecuniary interest? Okay, saying none, we'll move on. We have no presentations this evening, but we do have one delegation. Davin Johnson and Jeanette LaRue will appear before council to speak to Clause 3i of Report Number 39, received from Heritage Kingston with respect to the application for Ontario Heritage Act approval, 81 Gore Street. And just a note to our delegation that you have up to five minutes to speak, and then I will open up the floor to questions from members of council.
Okay, thank you. I'm happy to put my video on if the host will allow me to. I'm also happy to stay. Oh, here we go. Okay, well, good evening, everybody. I want to first thank you for the opportunity to present this delegation and discuss our project. My name is Davin Johnson. I'm speaking on behalf of myself and my wife, Jeanette LaRue. We live at 81 Gore Street in Old Sinam Ward with her three-year-old child. Along with my brief oral presentation, we have also submitted a few slides as well. I'm not sure if those were received, but please feel free to post them if they are available. We purchased this modest home in 2015. It is a small home with just one and a half bedrooms and no basement. There are several major repairs that are urgent at the home, including water and insect damage. These not only affect our day-to-day quality of life at the house, but also importantly threaten the long-term sustainability of this home as a heritage structure. The decaying brick facade is but one example of this. We are a young and expanding family and wish to stay living here. In fact, we are seeking to invest in this house to be our permanent family home for decades to come. We love our vibrant little street. It is full of life, as I was supposed to show you in the pictures, but I don't see the presentation yet. Oh, there we go. As you can see in the images, it's full of life. We love the lifestyle of living within walking distance to work, schools, extended family and amenities like City Park. And if we could go to the next slide, please. What we are proposing is mainly a rear expansion with a modest increase to roof pitch to accommodate a top half-story. The reasons necessitating changes to the front are: we have a unique and smaller lot, we have a large silver maple tree in the backyard, and our property backs onto the Wellington Street School where a new condominium is slated for construction. This project, in addition to losing many older growth trees, will negatively impact backyards of adjoining properties, and we do not wish to add to this. The front changes are carefully designed to be minimally visible from Gore Street and will be partially obscured by foliage at the front of the house, a side gable and our proximity to the sidewalk. In balance with this expansion, we are committed to the considerable restoration and repair work required for this house. We have hired an excellent local heritage builder, Mark Peabody, whomself is a resident of Sinam Ward. Mark Peabody has an excellent reputation in restoration and alterations of homes within the neighborhood, including the adjoining properties at 77 and 79 Gore. The proposal that is before you today is a project of over three years of considerable time and energy and financial investment. We have worked with an experienced team of heritage consultants who gave us constructive feedback to achieve a design that is consistent with both the intent and written policies of the HCD plan. We have worked collaboratively with city heritage planning staff who fully support our project and have committed to overseeing the finer details as they unfold. We have been open to the input and suggestions of the Kingston Heritage Committee and this month received partial support from committee members who were in attendance. Next slide, please. We are here today with the written support of many of our neighbors who are keen to see us continue to live on Gore Street. We are proud of our proposal, which has been carefully designed to be a rehabilitation and heritage-sensitive renovation, which will enable our family to continue living here permanently. It will allow our expanding family to continue to live within walking distance to work, parks and local schools. Importantly, our proposal is also consistent with needs and goals of the city of Kingston, which is to densify close to downtown as a way of addressing a housing shortage without urban sprawl as per the declared climate emergency. I end with a direct quote from the HCD plan for Old Sinam Ward. It reads, "Designation does not entail freezing the district in time. Rather, designation is a form of change management that allows communities to control the rate and type of change within the district." Thank you for your time.
Okay, thank you very much, Mr. Johnson. Are there any questions from council? Councillor Stroud.
Thank you, Your Worship. Thank you, Mr. Johnson. I'm aware of the details of the proposal and sat for four years on the Heritage Committee, so I can imagine the process that you've just gone through. I guess my first question would be, if council upholds Heritage Kingston's recommendation to deny the application, do you have a Plan B and what would that look like?
Well, so during our design process, we did go through a number of design iterations. We worked with our heritage consultants and with the builders. And so if you look at our heritage files, you will see that we have, you know, multiple other plans. We felt this was the best one for submitting forward due to kind of the balance of factors. I mean, you know, we're certainly appreciative of heritage and, you know, I think most people in the city are appreciative of heritage and why we have these guidelines in place. But we felt that this was the best balance between like needs of our neighbors, needs of our family. You know, if the recommendations upheld, then, you know, we're going to have to go back to our, you know, our team of heritage consultants and builders and, you know, we certainly hope not because, I mean, it has been a lengthy process. But, you know, we are committed to living in this house.
Thank you. And could you tell us about why it is that you have to raise the roof and why you can't use more of the backyard? I understand there's a silver maple tree there and some other constraints?
Yeah, so there's two major reasons why we can't use the backyard. One is this large tree. And so at the Wellington Street School, they lost a lot of the, you know, the larger trees. And these are important part of Sinam Ward. They, you know, they contribute to shade, animal habitat and the streetscape. And so we want to be careful not to build further back to disturb the root structure of that. And then in addition, you know, the neighboring properties, their backyards are the expansion in the back is going to be a four-story expansion that is basically right up to the property line of adjoining properties. And so if we build further back, it will really negatively impact the neighboring properties. And we really wanted to do these renovations with the, you know, as support of our neighbors. We, you know, we really feel invested in the, you know, our neighborhood, like our neighbor 83 Gore Street, you know, it's, you know, babysits our child all the time and feels like family. And so we wanted to make sure that we prioritize the needs of our neighbors.
Thank you.
Councillor Ossanik.
Thank you, Your Worship, and thanks for the information you've just provided. Is it the silver maple tree? Is that the reason why you can't dig down and create a basement and instead you have to go up? Is that the reason why?
So partially with the basement. So we actually also earlier in the process hired a structural engineer to look at the feasibility of doing a basement. And they had some major concerns with the basement. The largest was that it would require prolonged use of, I don't know if the right term, but like some heavy equipment, whole ram or something that they felt that it was too much risk of damaging the foundation of adjoining properties. That was the major concern with the basement.
Thank you for proposing to save the tree. Thank you.
Are there any other questions? Okay, Mr. Johnson, thank you very much. So with that, we have no further delegations, so we will move on in our agenda. We have no briefings tonight. Are there any petitions to present? Councillor Doherty.
Thank you and through you, Mr. Mayor. I have a petition and I'll just read it to you. It's Dear Mayor Patterson and Members of City Council, this petition urges Kingston City Council to continue to support the Sleeping Cabin project currently situated at the Portsmouth Olympic Harbour. The POH pilot project comes to an end on April 30th, 2022. Please relocate the cabins in a suitable location and allow them to continue to house homeless individuals. We implore City Council to continue their financial assistance of this project and grant permission for the sleeping cabins to move to another appropriate location in the city, which would house more people. As you all know, homelessness is not just, does not just affect the unhoused. It affects our whole community. It is incumbent upon us as a proud and caring community to take care of the most vulnerable and support them in a way that optimally will see them transition to independent living. We see the Sleeping Cabin project as a necessary first step in making this a reality. Respectfully submitted. And I have numerous pages here. Thanks.
Okay, thank you very much. Are there any other petitions? Okay, we have no motions of congratulations, condolences or speedy recovery. We have no deferred motions, so we will move on to reports. First, we have Report Number 37 from the CAO.
Moved by Councillor Ossanik, seconded by Councillor Neil. The Report Number 37 from the Chief Administrative Officer consent be received and adopted.
So there are just the two clauses? Would anyone like to deal with them separately? Councillor Chappell would? Okay, so we will deal with them one at a time. So Clause One, a word of contract header replacement at the Cataract Way Community Centre. Councillor Chappell.
Thank you, Your Worship. My question is really for purchasing. We have another, again, another fine example of using bid-and-go, a service that nobody uses, evidently by the way this comes forward. And I'm wondering how come we continue to use bid-and-go when I have been stressing that bids and tenders is the more common service being used by municipalities across Ontario? I'd also like a listing of the 12 potential vendors because when I see a report like this, we don't know if it's Bob's Bake Shop that's pulled down the tender or Kara's Cupcakes that pulled down the tender. So we don't know exactly if we're actually getting the target market in our procurement process. So I have no issue with granting this and supporting this particular proposal, but I find it frustrating that we're not getting value for the taxpayers by only having one bid.
Ms. Kennedy.
Thank you through you, Mr. Mayor. So I can certainly respond with respect to the use of bid and tenders versus bid-and-go. So we have been working probably the last year or more with bid and tenders. We've been having discussions with them about the use of them. And we are looking at actually the opportunity of using both them and bid-and-go. I can say that most of the vendors that are interested in these types of contracts are signed up with both systems. But there is certainly the opportunity for us to expand our process and just use both of them. I wouldn't at this point recommend getting rid of bid-and-go. I think that the city is known for using bid-and-go now, and there's a lot of other functionality that we've implemented with that system that I would hate to lose. The bids and tenders has similar functionality, but not a lot of different functionality in terms of what we would use internally. But we are certainly looking at it in terms of whether it would expand the market, whether there's a lot of vendors that would use bid and tender that would not be registered with bid-and-go and that would expand our opportunity. With respect to who has bid for this, I'm not sure whether the commissioner would have that information, but if not, we have that on our system and we can certainly provide that. I don't have it readily available tonight, but we could have been, we can provide the vendors that downloaded the actual procurement documents. And quite often, we will follow up if there's a number of them as to why they didn't bid, but we can certainly get that information.
Ms. Kennedy, would be possible to include that information going forward in these reports? We only have one tender.
Yes, through you, Mr. Mayor. Yes, we can provide that information. We could start including it or certainly including the numbers. I'd have to look in terms of whether there's any issue in terms of providing that publicly. I don't think there would be. And so we could start to include it if council thought that was useful information to have. We could start to pull that together and include it.
Thank you.
Okay, are there any other questions or comments on Clause One? Okay, we will call the vote. All those in favor? Opposed? And that's carried. Clause Two, a word of contract, supply and delivery of propane cylinders. Councillor Chappell.
Yes, thank you, Your Worship. Again, this is an opportunity for us to demonstrate in the spirit of reconciliation to reach out to business owners of Indigenous descent. I noticed that on this list, there is no listing of Tylenol propane. And I think that it is unfortunate that we haven't gone out to the community and asked Tylenol propane to consider bidding on this proposal. I was wondering if there was any outreach done to that community.
Is there anyone from staff that can address that? Can Mr. Huguenbos?
I thank you, Mr. Mayor, and through you. Councillor Chappell, I don't know if we did reach out directly to beyond the bid-and-go process, but your point is taken. We can definitely seek to do that with the next call for propane or other fuel-related RFPs that they may be able to run a bid for.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. If no other questions or comments, we'll call the vote. All those in favor? Opposed? And that's carried. Okay, moving on to Report Number 38 from the CAO.
Moved by Councillor McLaren, seconded by Councillor Holland. The Report Number 38 from the Chief Administrative Officer consent be received and adopted clause by clause.
Okay, so the first clause is Capital Project Status Report, Fourth Quarter 2021. Okay, we will call the vote. All those in favor? Opposed? And that's carried. Clause Two, Administrative Amendment to Bylaw Number 2022-43. All those in favor? Opposed? And that's carried. Okay, moving on to a point of order. Councillor Chappell.
Your Worship, I just have a question. We just voted on the reserve. I'm just, there was a recommendation, was that the vote that we just had with regards to the source of funding that would also see us putting money into a parking program for bicycles? Did we just vote on that? Because I was hoping that would be split up, one discuss where the money was coming from the municipal equipment reserve fund.
So on a recommend report, every item is separated. So we dealt with Clause One and then with Clause Two. So are you referring back to Clause One?
No, I guess I'm looking at Report 22084. I apologize. So this is the capital status report.
Yeah, so this is Clause One. So we've already voted on it. Was there something that you wanted to speak to or?
Yes, there was. It just went so fast. I thought because it was written in the format of a motion that we would have had an opportunity to discuss splitting out a motion. The council approved $50,000 to transfer sewers in Kingston from the Municipal Caval Reserve Fund, but we're talking about bicycles, 10 deep bike keep docking stations, which to me should have come from the municipal reserve on parking, not the municipal capital reserve fund. So I missed the vote. That's fine. I messed up. But it's just very frustrating that we're utilizing a reserve fund that does not deem to be appropriate for this acquisition.
Okay, so I think we've already taken the vote. Your point is taken, Councillor Chappell. If there's anyone from staff that wants to address that, they can now or perhaps can follow up with you after. Okay. Okay, so moving on to Report Number 39 from Heritage Kingston.
Moved by Deputy Mayor Osterhoff and seconded by Councillor Doherty. The Report 39 from Heritage Kingston be received and adopted.
Okay, there are a number of clauses in Report Number 39. Would anyone like any of the clauses separated? Councillor Doherty? Right, so that's Clause Three, Subsection One, 81 Gore Street. Okay. Would anyone like any of the other clauses separated? Okay, so first we will call the vote on all of Report Number 39 except for Clause Three, Subsection One, with respect to the application for 81 Gore Street. Okay, all those in favor? Opposed? And that's carried. Okay, so now we're at Clause Three, Subsection One, Application for Ontario Heritage Act Approval, 81 Gore Street. Councillor Doherty.
Thank you and through you, Mr. Mayor. This application created a lot of discussion in Heritage Committee. The report from staff was actually an approval of this application and Heritage Kingston Committee decided to reject that. Councillor Osterhoff and I, and I believe one other person, we did support staff's recommendation. We had several reasons for supporting that. But I do understand the concerns that residents in that district are really worried that this application would be a precedent setting. So, okay, so I wonder if staff could actually explain why they, they really did explain that concern well at the time, but I think it's important for the public to hear, first of all, why staff feels like this would fit in a heritage district as well as why it's, why the precedent setting is not a concern.
I'm Ms. Campbell.
Thank you and through you, and thank you, Councillor Doherty, for that question. I'm going to start with the second part, which was the question about why staff did support the application as shared in the report. So staff are of the opinion that proposal does conform with the intent, goals and policies of the HCD plan and that it upholds the heritage conservation objectives set out within Kingston, City of Kingston's official plan, Ministry of Heritage Sport and Tourism and Culture Industries eight guiding principles, as well as the standards and guidelines for the practice of heritage. On the whole, staff's analysis considered all aspects of this complex proposal. And at the end of the day, it was staff's assessment that when taking as a complement or a package of change, that this is a reasonable alteration within the district and that it does not challenge or set aside the guidelines provided for the HCD plan, which speak more to managing change and ensuring that growth is possible within a district, but that it is done in such a way as to not negatively impact the neighborhood and the heritage attributes of the district as a whole. Speaking particularly to the concept of precedent, there are a number of items that staff consider. One is that nowhere in the policy or the guidelines does it actually call to the concept of precedent. One of the questions that the guidelines ask us to think about is whether or not if similar alterations were to be enacted on other properties within the district, if there would be a total hole that would be negative in the impact to the district. So all things be equal, if we saw another application with this degree of complexity, with this balance of alteration and managed change, would we find that acceptable? And the answer that staff present is yes, we would. And again, this has to do with the limited impacts or staff perceive not to be negative impacts on the HCD and the character of the district. But then again, specifically, we also look at some of the limitations that are at play that make this package unique. The law is quite small, as was shared earlier by the applicant. There's no opportunity to expand toward the road or to the south. They can't go deeper into their backyard. They've got challenges with going down, with blasting, as was referenced, that there would be structural concerns. And they want to retain amenity space and rear yard tree access, et cetera. I raised that as part of the precedent conversation because we have to see all things being equal if we were to see precedent potentially being negative. The other part is that staff don't consider applications in individual sections. We don't look at the roof addition in this case and say that this would set a precedent for roofs to be altered across the district because we look at the total balance of the application and the total impact on the heritage character of the district. And again, staff do not find that to be negative in this case. And in this fact, in the balance, there is no precedent here that staff are worried about. In fact, there are bonuses here. The applicants are proposing to make some improvements to their property to restore some lost attributes to actually what we would argue was improve the character of the district by making those changes. And also, we think there is a strong precedent being demonstrated here as well by the applicants who had spent almost three years working on this project with consultation with the Heritage Committee. This is what is supposed to happen in heritage districts. When changes are proposed, they are meant to go through rigorous consideration and proposal and examination and reexamination and replanning. And on the whole, staff feel that at the end of this process, the application can be supported, that it does not set a negative precedent that we would be concerned about moving forward and that most importantly, there are no negative impacts on the heritage character of the district and that if we saw similar applications coming forward in complexity and approach, that staff would actually probably be in a position to be supportive of those as well. Thank you.
Councillor Doherty.
Thank you for your extensive answer. Now, the district plan does say that roof profiles visible from the street should remain unaltered. Now, the roof is going to be raised by seven feet, so that is quite an alteration. So I wonder if you could speak to that?
Thank you and through you, Mr. Chair. The roof profile, you're correct, 5.3.1 of the district plan does say roof profile visible from the street should remain unaltered. That's a should, not a shall. But that also has to be considered against the impact to the character of not only the streetscape but the heritage conservation district as a whole. So in this case, the roof line is not an assigned attribute to, for example, a Part Four designated property. It is part of a suite of characteristics we would expect within the district. The change in the roof line is something that normally we would be very considerate and very, you know, careful about allowing. In this case, when we look at the alteration as proposed from the street edge experience and the character of the district, we don't believe that there will be an impact that is discernible to those within the neighborhood, that when they approach and understand this building within its streetscape and within the district's plan and role, that it would be a distinguishable or notable change in the appearance and style of this building that would impact negatively the character of the district. So you're right, there is an over two-meter gross in the height of the roof, but they are also continuing to manage the pitch of the roof, which was actually a strong concern raised in pre-consultation that was addressed by the applicants as part of their alteration to their proposed plans.
Thank you, and I just would like to just make a couple of comments. I think this is, I know this is quite a large change to this property, but looking at the processes that the owners have but, um, looking at the processes that the owners have gone through and the staff, and the, the people that they employed to come up with a proper design, I am actually quite comfortable, um, in supporting staff's recommendation, which in this case would be actually a note to this application. So, thanks.
Okay, thank you. Is there anybody else that wishes to speak? Counselor Stroud?
Thank you, your worship. Uh, I'm gonna be honest, this is a real dilemma. I find myself on the horns of a dilemma on this one. Because having chaired the Heritage Committee for four years and reading through the comments from the six members of the Heritage Committee that did not support the permit, um, being approved, I, I can't really find anything wrong with anything that they said. They mentioned various, uh, ways that this project does not comply with the Old Sydenham HCD, with the district plan, and I believe they're correct. From a heritage perspective, this project is too big and too incongruous with the language of the plan. Uh, if that was the only, uh, yardstick we used, it would be pretty much a slam dunk. We should support the committee's, uh, recommendation. However, because it seemed, uh, like I could see both sides, because I also read the correspondence from the applicants, and then I read the letters from the neighbors on the street, and I also can report that that block of Gore Street is still a family neighborhood. Uh, it's very close to where I live. My kids trick or treat on that block every Halloween, uh, as do, uh, these homeowners. Um, it is, it is one of the sections of the district that remains a family neighborhood because there are many lovingly restored and maintained homes, eh, on that block. Uh, now, there's always going to be development pressure. People want more room. People want to add additions. Usually in my district, we know what that means. That means, you know, ten bedrooms to accommodate lots of undergraduates, right? That's usually what it means in Sydenham District. This is actually not the case here. This is a family who have one child and maybe another one on the way, who need more room than the small, very small working class, uh, heritage building would provide. You might ask, why didn't they buy, uh, buy a bigger house then? I think we know the answer to that. In, in, uh, in this desirable part of town, they may not have been able to afford anything more, and they're, they're looking at renovating a smaller house, and that's what they're attempting to do. So, as you can see, I can see both sides, but I can also report that I, uh, because I was unsure, I went to the Sydenham District Association and I asked them, and they had quite a big discussion about it. Uh, they, uh, you may have received a correspondence from Laura Knapp, uh, former chair of SDA. She also resides in the same neighborhood and also has a young family and also lives in a heritage home. And she is actually okay with this renovation. And, and according to her, so is the district executive, the SDA. So, that, like I said, this is not the typical situation where the neighbors and the SDA are up in arms about us, uh, you know, ignoring our official plan or our zoning bylaw or what have you. This is a heritage application that does break some heritage rules, but it's done in a very high quality and tasteful way. So, do I stand on principle and support the Heritage Committee? Or do I do my job as a representative of my neighborhood and acknowledge the support that they have gathered from the neighbors and from the SDA and recommend that we essentially veto the Heritage Committee's recommendation? I don't know if I'm in the right, I don't think I should say. I think I should let you decide what we ought to do, and I'd really like to hear comment from someone else on council before we vote on this, to help frame this. I think I've given you all the facts, and there's also a chance to ask more questions if you're unsure. But, uh, the precedent, uh, question of whether or not other homes that maybe aren't family homes, that maybe are rental income homes, could, could they not expand their, uh, you know, add another floor to their, to their small homes and, and double the size of their small homes and thus double the rentable space? And I think the answer is probably yes. So, what that means is we would need to look at those applications one by one at the Heritage Committee and perhaps uphold those no votes in the future.
Thirty seconds.
That's the way, if we pass, if we don't pass the Heritage Recommendation tonight, we will have to be diligent in the future to prevent the precedent, uh, the problem of precedent that is mentioned by the Heritage Committee members. So, that's where it stands, and, uh, I will listen to my colleagues and decide how to vote. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Next is Deputy Mayor Osterhoff.
Good evening. Thank you, Mayor Patterson, and, um, I really appreciate the, the Counselor Stroud's comments and, um, you know, his struggle there and his, um, his weighing of, um, the decision. So, I am on Heritage as well, sitting with, uh, Counselor Doherty, and, um, really, um, really do appreciate the committee and, uh, how, how they've arrived to that position, um, considering all that we've had to consider there. But, uh, I am, um, I am superb of the application, so I'll get that right. So, I, I, uh, this time, I, I did not support the committee's decision not to support the application. My view is that this application should be supported because it's a reasonable ask and is respectful of heritage and it's in its place and location. Uh, I believe the alterations are necessary and, um, family friendly. Um, this, this, the work being done will be done extremely well and is, um, is, um, really going to make, um, livability an important component to this building. Um, so I wanted to say, I believe this application should not be judged by what others, um, uh, could do if this is approved. That would not be fair, uh, in this application. And I really appreciate it as well that, uh, staff from Heritage Planning and Director Campbell, uh, made, uh, really wise comments, um, I believe, and, uh, but there are not necessarily negative impacts here. It's a balanced application, we heard, and it is respectful of the guiding principles. And, um, I believe it, it should be supportive because it is supportive of heritage in the area. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you. Counselor Neal?
Thank you. Um, like Counselor Stroud, I came in tonight thinking I knew how I was gonna vote because I've always voted in support of the Heritage Committee. I guess my, my concern, and perhaps staff can answer this. In planning, we always say applications are site-specific and don't necessarily create a precedent. Is it similar with heritage applications? If staff could address that?
Ms. Campbell?
Uh, thank you and through you, and thank you Counselor Neal for that question. That is correct. That is true in, in Heritage and the Ontario Heritage Act as well. Um, site-specific applications are always considered in the context of the site, um, and not based on precedents. And in this case, future decisions in HCE will consider the exact same standards, guidelines and provisions of the HCD plan, as well as other policy documents and guidelines in making a complete consideration of an application in the context in which it comes in. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Okay, is there anybody else that wishes to speak? Uh, Mr. Clerk, can I see you for a moment? Okay, so just to be clear, um, the recommendation that is before us is a negative recommendation. So, if you agree with the decision of Heritage Kingston to deny the, uh, the Heritage Act approval, then you would vote yes. If you instead do not agree with Heritage Kingston's negative recommendation, you would vote no. Is everyone clear on that? So, if, if it passes, then Heritage Kingston's decision is upheld. If it fails, then there would be an opportunity for council to then put forward the positive recommendation to allow for the application to go forward. Is everyone with me on that? Okay, so first we'll call the vote on the recommendation from Heritage Committee. All those in favor? Three opposed? Seven? No, six. Okay, um, three in favor. Uh, Deputy Mayor Osterhoff? Sorry, did you have a point of order?
No, I don't. Sorry, man.
Okay, sorry, so I've just, so there were three in favor, six opposed, so it loses. Counselor McLaren, Hutchison and Chappelle in the minority. Oh, it is seven opposed. Oh, I wasn't counting myself. Sorry, guys, I'm a little rusty at this. Okay, so yeah, so it is, uh, seven opposed. Okay, so that loses. So, now is there a member of council who wants to put forward the positive recommendation? So, that would be to uphold the, to put forward the original staff recommendation. Moved by Counselor Stroud, seconded by Deputy Mayor Osterhoff. All those in favor? Opposed? And that carries by a vote of nine to one. Counselor Chappelle opposed. Okay, we have nothing more from, uh, Report Number 39. Uh, nothing from Committee of the Whole Information Reports. We have one information report, 2022 Municipal Debt Limits. Any questions? Counselor Chappelle?
Yes, your worship. Since we threw, we blasted through the other expenditures for the year, I'd like to specifically ask, how much is our current debt on the books that we are accounted for? And how much additional debt has not yet been expensed in the debt? And what is that total value?
Ms. Kennedy?
Thank you through you, Mr. Mayor. So, we have, uh, total debt that's been issued and outstanding at the end of, uh, December 2021, about $366 million. Um, and that will have come down probably by about 15 million or so, um, as we're making payments in now into 2022. We have another 136 million of debt, um, that council has approved, but we have not yet issued. So, some of the larger projects, like the Third Crossing, um, I believe the Fleet Maintenance Garage is yet to be issued, and I think we still have to issue some money on the, uh, the sewer plant. So, that's the other 136. So, we have total debt that's been approved up to the end of 2021, either approved or already issued of just over $500 million.
Okay, if there are no other questions on the information report, we'll continue on. We have no information reports, members of council. Miscellaneous business, we do have one motion moved by Counselor Stroud, seconded by Counselor Ossanik. That is requested by Liz Anderson, Kingston Health Sciences Centre. Council proclaimed the week of April 11th to the 15th, 2022, as Medical Laboratory Appreciation Week in Kingston. We'll call the vote. All those in favor? Opposed? And that's carried. Okay, on to new motions. We have one new motion, and I'm gonna ask if Deputy Mayor Osterhoff is able to, to take the chair and, uh, walk us through that motion.
Thank you, Mayor Patterson. Um, I can do that. Thank you. Will I see that motion on the screen? Thank you. New motion number one, moved by Mayor Patterson, seconded by Deputy Mayor Osterhoff. Whereas many Ontario municipalities, including Barry, Guelph, Ottawa, Sudbury, Thunder Bay and Toronto have displayed or are displaying the Ukraine flag in solidarity with the Ukrainian people. And whereas in show of support for Ukraine, City Hall was illuminated with Ukraine's national colors, blue and yellow, every night in March, for which a previously approved illumination has not already been scheduled. And whereas Kingston City Council wishes to demonstrate its continued solidarity with the Ukrainian people, therefore be it resolved, notwithstanding Section 3.1.8 of the City of Kingston Flag Display Policy, the City of Kingston Flag on the roof of City Hall be replaced with the Ukrainian flag until the war in the Ukraine is ended. Mayor Patterson, would you like to speak to that?
Thank you, uh, thank you Deputy Mayor. I think the motion is self-explanatory. Uh, of course, in the month of March, uh, council voted to illuminate City Hall in blue and yellow in support of Ukraine. Um, as we moved into April, there were a number of community members that approached me to ask if there could be, continue to be a show of support. And, and I think, to be clear, there are a number of very tangible things that our community can do to, to support those that have been negatively impacted, uh, by the, uh, by the current conflict, but also room for symbolic support as well. So, this coming weekend, there is another rally in support of, of, uh, Ukraine, you know, happening in front of City Hall. And I think it's important that we continue as a city to be able to show a gesture of that support. At the same time, recognize as we're moving into the spring, uh, into flag-raising season, that there are lots of other, uh, worthy causes and lots of community groups that, um, are putting forward applications to be able to raise flags and to be able to call attention to really important causes in the community. So, in order to be able to balance off these two, uh, what this motion proposes is that right now, there are, there are two flags that fly on top of Kingston City Hall. On one end is the Canadian flag, and on the other end is the Kingston flag. So, what this motion would propose is that the City of Kingston flag would be replaced with the Ukrainian national flag, so that you would have the Canadian flag flying on one side of City Hall and the Ukrainian flag flying on the other side of City Hall. And this motion proposes that that would occur until the conflict is ended, uh, but understanding that really this motion would be in effect for the rest of this term of council. I think we all can agree that we hope that the conflict will be over long before the end of this term of council, but I did want to, uh, make sure that council understood exactly what the timeframe is that's implied here. So, I do hope that as, uh, as council, we can support this and again, send what I think is a really important, uh, continued message of support that we stand with, uh, Ukraine and the Ukrainian people right now. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, would anyone else like to speak to this motion? And I'm not sure if I can see everybody, so I'll do my best. Anyone? I don't see anyone, so, um, then we will, we will vote. All in favor of this motion? Madam Clerk, if you could count with me. I'm really, don't have great camera here. I have, um...
Mr. Deputy Mayor, that carried unanimously.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Mayor Patterson. I return the chair to you.
Thank you very much, Deputy Mayor, uh, and thank you to council for that. Okay, so, uh, with that, we have no other new motions. Are there any notices of motion? Okay, Miss, uh, Madam Deputy Clerk, I will ask for minutes, please.
Moved by Counselor Stroud, seconded by Counselor Chappelle, with the minutes of City Council meeting Number Eight-2022, held Tuesday, March 22nd, 2022, be confirmed.
All those in favor? Opposed? And that's carried. Uh, we have some tabling of documents, a number of communications. Is there any other business? Madam Deputy Clerk, I will ask for bylaws, please.
Moved by Counselor Hutchison, seconded by Counselor Holland, that bylaws one, four and five be given their first and second reading.
All those in favor? Opposed? And that's carried.
Moved by Counselor Hutchison, seconded by Counselor Holland, that Clause 12.63 of Bylaw Number 2021-41 be suspended for the purpose of giving Bylaw Five three readings.
All those in favor? Opposed? And that's carried.
And finally, moved by Counselor Hutchison, seconded by Counselor Holland, that bylaws two through five be given their third reading.
All those in favor? Opposed? And that's carried. Okay. With that, 7:50. That's pretty good. Motion to adjourn, please. Moved by Counselor Ossanik, seconded by Counselor Neal. All those in favor? Opposed, and we're adjourned. Thanks very much, everybody.